Okay, welcome back. I want to officially call the meeting back to order for the Board of County Commission. Point of privilege, I just want to thank everybody for their patience and their willingness to recess this morning for those that came back this afternoon. We were able to go over and celebrate the groundbreaking of Wichita Biomed Campus. A big deal. The largest investment in Wichita downtown history, almost $300 million, 3,000 med students running around, and the track is only upward for what's going to come on the medical industry here. We wanted to be a part of that naturally with what we're doing with Calm Care Crisis and the partnership the county has there with the campus. So, thank you for your patience and your flexibility and willing to recess and come back. We are back. It's one o'clock. Let's get to work. Madam Clerk, call the first, call the next item.
Item M, consideration of a reinvestment housing incentive district, RHID in Goddard, Kansas.
Okay, Brent Shelton.
Good afternoon, Chairman Beatty, members of the County Commission. For the record, I'm Brent Shelton, your Deputy CFO. The item before you is the consideration of a resolution to nullify the creation of a reinvestment housing incentive district in Goddard, Kansas. Now, the purpose of the RHID would be to provide public financing support of up to three and a half million dollars towards statutorily eligible expenses or infrastructure for the consideration of a 100-unit apartment complex in the city of Goddard. Now, the reason, just for clarification, that you only have a resolution to nullify as part of the agenda packet is based on the statutorily allowed actions that are offered to the B O C C to affect the creation of RHID. You only have the ability to nullify the creation of the RHID if you would determine that the creation of such would create adverse effect on the county. This action must occur within 30 days of the city taking action to create the RHID. Now, adverse effect is not defined in the state statutes that have established the RHID program, and so on April 10th, the County Commission adopted a policy 2.201 to govern and to guide staff in looking at items that might be determined to create adverse effect to the county. As you look at this project today, I would encourage you to focus on the core issue before the commission today, and that is, should the County Commission allow the deferral of potential tax revenues that would come from the development of this apartment building to be distributed directly to the RHID fund that would be set up to support this development? As you've seen in the agenda packet, county and county fire district support of this three and a half million dollar incentive would be about 1.4 million over a period of time of up to 25 years. So county support, including the fire district, would be about 40% of the deferred tax revenues going into the RHID. So what is an RHID designed to do? At the core of the RHID statute, it states a purpose that has basically four parts. One is that there is a shortage of quality housing within that city, that the shortage is expected to persist, that that housing shortage is providing a substantial deterrent to future economic growth within the city, and that the future economic well-being of the city depends on providing some additional incentives to provide this quality housing. So we took a look at that core statement and looked at this particular project, and while we have heard that the additional 100 housing units may create the opportunity for a sit-down or casual dining restaurant in the area, what we see is that that's about the only economic driver that has been mentioned by the city as something that would come about potentially as a result of this development. Further, in terms of economic growth, we looked at the last 10 years, and the assessed value in the city of Goddard over the last 10 years is the fifth, they are the fifth fastest growing city in Sedgwick County, and over the last five years have moved in to number four. So we seem to be seeing a lot of economic growth within the city of Goddard. We then took a look at the items that we delineated in policy that the county should consider in determining whether or not the project would create adverse effect to the county. Provided you with a report where we walked through all of those, but I'm going to focus these remarks just on those findings of adverse effect that we determined that are also showing up in that resolution that is before you today. Number one, and probably the most important, is that we believe that this project is economically feasible without RHID support. We do not find a but for that requires public, additional public incentive for this project. The project currently has $2.6 million in public funding support from two sources. The first is about a $665,000 sales tax exemption that was granted as part of an IRB issuance from the city of Goddard. Additionally, the city of Goddard has received a $2 million moderate income housing grant from the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation specifically for the creation of this project. We early on received a snapshot of financial statements from the city that showed that when this project reached what they called stabilization, which was the third year of the project, that it still was not economically feasible without any incentives, but was feasible with all of the incentives. That included RHID. We asked for and received last evening a snapshot of that same time period with this two and a half million dollars. We developed our own financial statements for this, and you've seen that we would project that with the existing $2.6 million in public funding, this project would generate about a 7% return on investment. I've done it a number of other ways, and I can't get below that number. So we think that the project is feasible without RHID funding support. You may see a different opinion with follow-up speakers, but I would stand by the information that we've provided. The second item where we found adverse effect was that the proposed private equity funding or the risk mitigation surrounding the developer wasn't adequately addressed in the development agreement. Now, the proposed project is to be funded, if it goes with RHID increment, on a pay-as-you-go basis. That's what we would prefer. That means that the developer pays the costs, submits expenses to the city, the city then, with the incremental revenues, would reimburse the developer. However, there is a provision in the development agreement that at the request of the developer, the city would endeavor to issue special obligation bonds and incur public debt to fund these infrastructure expenses and then repay the city through the special obligation bonds or the incremental revenues from the RHID. Because an RHID is patterned like a TIF, we looked at history, and what we've seen is that the times when the developer didn't have enough skin in the game, or the times when the developer was supported through debt issue and didn't personally guarantee or provide guarantees to handle any shortfalls, we've seen the local government left holding the bag, in fact, making up, in some cases, millions of dollars of revenue shortfall. So because this policyability exists, I don't think we've mitigated enough risk that we would move forward because they would have the option to incur that debt. And the third thing that we looked at in terms of determining adverse effect was looking at the benefit-to-cost ratio. Does the public, do the public benefits that would be derived from this project equal or exceed the public costs? Historically, when we look at economic development incentives, we get an independent third-party review. These are typically done by Wichita State University Center for Economic Development and Business Research. They perform the study on this proposed RHID incentive. The methodology that has been used consistently over the years was changed at the request of the developer, the developers' council, to include these deferred revenues as both a public benefit and a public cost. I don't know how it can be both. The fact that the developer would be paying these taxes, and they would go directly to an RHID fund to repay infrastructure, doesn't create a public benefit. If there was a tax abatement, the same impact would be felt, but that's not considered a public benefit. So you can't count a deferral of tax or money that's not being received that would otherwise potentially be received by the local governments as both a benefit and a cost. We've historically looked for a one-to-one ratio. Benefits at least equal the costs. If the, if the public cost is counted as both a benefit and as an expense, a one-to-one ratio means basically nothing. So if we back those out, we look at, for this project, a 0.28 to one benefit-to-cost ratio to the county, 0.18 to one to the county fire district. Basically, it's minus four to one for the county, minus five to one for the fire district. So for the reasons that we've stated, we don't see a but for, we don't think there's been enough risk mitigation against developer default, and the fact that if county and fire district revenues were made, were deferred for this RHID, they do not provide public benefit that nearly equals the public cost. I would recommend that you adopt the resolution, finding adverse effect on Sedgwick County of a proposed reinvestment housing incentive district in the city of Goddard, Kansas. I'm available for questions. I believe we have some representatives from the city and the developer that would like to address you as well.
Yes. Okay, Brent, thank you for the analysis here and the work that your department has done in cooperation with Goddard and advising the B O C C. Okay, any questions or comments for Brent? Okay, hang tight. There was a request from the applicant for some extended time to give a presentation, and I'm inclined to support that. Best practice would be, because typically we have five minutes that we allot in a public comment, best practice would be if we're willing to extend, that we would make a motion to formally extend that. You agree, Counselor?
Clerk, sponsored by the County Counselor, yes, I would agree. Chairman, I believe that would be best practice.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to extend public comment to the applicant to 10 minutes. If more time is needed, I'm happy to decline. So, we have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Howe, Commissioner Lopez, Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay. On behalf of the applicant, you're welcome to come and... Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Beatty. Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate the time extension. My name is Joe Oaks, here on, here from Paulsoni Law Firm out of Kansas City, here on behalf of Goddard Housing LLC. So I'm here to ask for your support for a project that I think is going to provide much-needed housing for a city in desperate need of it. So in the next few slides, I'm going to quickly highlight the project, highlight the urgent need for housing in Goddard, and then briefly touch on each of the potential grounds for adverse effect that are highlighted in the draft resolution before you today. I'm going to say next slide so you all can flip. You all have the visual aid. Okay, slide here. So I thought staff did a good job outlining the project, but just to give you a little bit more background, Goddard Housing LLC is proposing to construct a 100 to 108-unit multifamily complex at the southeast corner of East Third Street and Goddard Road. I say 100 to 108. 100 is what our development agreement obligates us to complete. Current plans are for three 36-unit buildings, each with market amenities and finishes, paved, covered parking, targeted at moderate-income households and renters. Slide. I'm here today because the city of, because of the city of Goddard's urgent need for multifamily housing. Compared to other areas in the county, Goddard's relatively unique, and a previous speaker highlighted the fast population growth. Coupled with that is also a fast growth in owner-occupied housing. What Goddard doesn't have is Class A apartments. It actually has zero Class A apartments, and that's what this map is intended to show, that when we first spoke with the city manager, we were surprised to learn the city hasn't had an apartment project in decades. The newest apartments the city has are nearly 50 years old, 1975 and 1970. And you can see some of the problems that this creates in the city's housing study that was completed in 2023, where despite a rising population, despite a growth in owner-occupied housing, you're seeing a drastic increase in cost-burden renters. Those are renters that are spending 30% or more of their income on rent. And what the housing study concludes is that it's clear that the city's housing supply is not meeting its demand, and that there's a significant need for more, for more housing options for renters in smaller-income households. So our goal from the beginning has been to fill that need and provide much-needed rental housing at attainable prices that residents can afford. But to do so, we face significant challenges and barriers to development, heavy infrastructure costs, the current inflationary market affecting construction prices, labor, interest rates, all of which necessitate the need for this project or for incentives. So with that background in mind, next few slides I prepared address the need for incentives and specifically the need for RHID for this project. So the first potential grounds, and I apologize for the size of this slide here, I hope you all have it in front of you that you can see. First potential grounds for adverse effect listed in the resolution is that the project is economically feasible without the RHID. What this slide shows is due to the barriers that I just highlighted, why that's not the case, why it's not feasible without incentives, and specifically without the RHID. You know, previous speaker referenced, we delivered this to county staff ahead of time, and this is the exact same snapshot we delivered to them earlier, adding one column right in the middle there, which is the projected return with the $2 million grant, with the IRB sales tax exemption on construction materials, but not including RHID. And as you can see, we're projecting a 1.8% return at stabilization. No developer in the state is going to take on the construction risk of a $17 million project for a 1.8% return. Even with the RHID, including the $3.5 million cap, we're projecting a modest 6% return. That's near the floor of what any developer would look for in order to proceed. The only way this project is worth the risk is with, with the RHID. Without it, it's not going to generate a sufficient return that justifies not only the risk to developer, but to lenders that are getting increasingly more selective about projects to fund it and what amount. Previous speaker mentioned a 7% return without the RHID. I haven't seen that return that hasn't been provided to us or to the best of my knowledge to city, so I'm not specifically, I'm not able to comment on it right now. All I can say is, we are showing something drastically different. Just snapshots at stabilization. We gave a 10-year, we gave a 10-year return showing first 10 years during the construction period extends beyond it. The story remains the same. We're in the red without incentives. We are barely generating a return at all without the RHID and then getting a conservative return with the RHID that allows us to move forward. Next slide. The second grounds for adverse effect are that the negative fiscal impacts to Sedgwick County exceed the benefits, and first and foremost, fundamental to, that I think, fundamental to understanding costs and benefits to the county is understanding the way RHIDs work. So what this slide shows is that RHIDs allow for the capture of incremental taxes within a designated area over 25 years. Incremental for these purposes means the difference between the base property taxes and the increase in property taxes following new construction. So with RHID, taxing jurisdictions never receive less than they did before district creation, and the only way incremental revenues are generated at all is if the project is completed. I say all of this because I, because when we reference prospective future property tax revenues as a cost to the county, it's important to understand these aren't revenues that exist today. If county exercises its veto right today, looking at the numbers in the staff report, that doesn't mean county's $900,000 better off. That doesn't mean the fire district is $550,000 better off. What it means is that the RHID is terminated, it doesn't proceed, the project doesn't move forward, and if the project doesn't move forward, there will be no new incremental revenue that it generates. The county will get what it gets today on the tax parcel, about $9 a year. So I'm going to go to the next slide real quick. So as you know, the RHID has a maximum term of 25 years. The useful life of a multifamily project extends well beyond that. For purposes of just to illustrate an example, I picked 30 years here. So what this next slide shows is that even though with the RHID, county wouldn't get its incremental revenue until we've hit our cap, over a 30-year period, it's still going to create a substantial increase in tax generation. I won't recite the numbers line by line because I'm limited on time. I'm happy to address questions on that later. But the backup for these numbers is included in the second packet in front of you today, and it's assuming our cap has reached in year 20. The cap may be reached earlier. And then we then showed the next 10 years just to illustrate the point that the project has a useful life beyond the RHID. Point being, even with the RHID, the county is substantially better off with the project than it is today. Going to go to the next slide. What these numbers don't include, and what we've tried to list some of on the next slide is the other benefits that the project will create, property tax revenues, both in terms of those extending from this project throughout its useful life, and indirect property taxes resulting from commercial development that this project can, will support. They don't include sales tax revenues as a result of bringing 100 new residents to a major commercial district in the city. They don't include the things that are harder or can't be quantified, such as providing desperately needed housing to a city that doesn't have it, such as providing, such as reducing the amount of cost-burden renters in the city, such as bringing in new residents that are going to fill jobs or contribute to the local economy in other meaningful ways. Again, I know I'm limited on time. Cut me off if you need to. The last grounds for potential adverse effect is risk mitigation against developer default. Again, as it pertains to the use of tax dollars, the only way RHID revenues are generated in the first place is if the developer actually incurs the cost and the project's completed. This isn't a $3.5 million cash handout to developer. It's a redirection of property taxes over 25 years. Our development agreement does allow, does allow flexibility for bond issuance. We have no intent to issue bonds and are contemplating pay-as-you-go reimbursement. That is how the project will move forward. Even ignoring that point, there are adequate protections to ensure that the project, to protect against city if the developer doesn't perform. There's binding commencement-completion deadlines. There are limitations on when the scope of the project can be adjusted. If we default, or if we do not perform, city can declare us in default and terminate the agreement.
Thank you, Clerk. You're fine, Joe.
Okay. Apologize, I'll wrap up here in the next minute. Putting a finishing touch, to our, to my knowledge, no county or school district in the state has ever vetoed or nullified an RHID dating back to its creation in 1998. And presumably, a lot of the reason for this is because the statute puts such a high bar on demonstrating need, I mean, demonstrating that the shortage of housing is expected to persist without incentives. RHIDs require Secretary of Commerce approval, unlike TIF, unlike IRB, unlike any property tax incentive that I'm aware of in the state. There's a high bar, and the state only approves projects that have a clear demonstration in need, and this project has that, perhaps the most glaring definition of need in that it has zero Class A apartments. And just for a fast-growing community, that's not sustainable. That's why city first approached us for this project. That's why the state awarded this project a $2 million MIHRPA grant, based in large part on the city's commitment that it intended to pursue an RHID. For each, this is a good project. This is providing much-needed housing for a city that needs it. For each of these reasons, I urge you to support the project, to be a partner for the city, and to take no action on the adverse effect resolution before you or to turn it down. Thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions for Joe, or Mayor? Would you like to speak first, and then we can ask questions jointly? Is that, okay. Let's do that. Commissioner Meitzner?
Yeah, Joe, that'd be fun. Yes. Yeah, the very last slide. I know that some of us commissioners have tried to understand the history of the RHID world that we never even heard about until about 60 days ago. So if you could, you've got a lot of history there. Why don't you explain?
Yeah, what this slide is just intended to show, and I had it for backup here, is that Goddard is different than Wichita under the RHID Act. It has been eligible since 2021, not the most recent 2023 statutory change, and some of the limitations on unit count that have been talked about in previous meetings, those don't apply to Goddard. Those apply to cities with a population of 60,000 or more. I've tried to give a little bit of the history here from, from, you know, 1998 to 2021, you had to be in a city or a county, city and a county of less than 60,000. June of 2021, Goddard became eligible because that county language was removed. 2023 Wichita became eligible. So that's the intent of this slide.
Okay. Commissioner Howe?
One more question. Thank you for answering that question.
Yep.
In the 2023, I believe the legislature made a number of other changes. One of those was they included census tracts for the city of Wichita and other urban communities. And we, if I understand correctly, we have around 30 of those in the Wichita area total.
Yep.
So although the stipulation that a county itself could not be over at least 80,000 was a stipulation that was removed in 2021, that gave the green light supposedly for communities, communities like Goddard or Derby to go for RHID project. It wasn't until 2023 that that would have also included Wichita. Is that your understanding?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there anything else besides, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand exactly what they did in 2021, exactly what they did in 2023, besides making more areas eligible to RHIDs? Is there anything else that they did?
Put limitations on those cities with greater than, population greater than 60,000, the unit caps, some of the stuff that's been highlighted in previous meetings. I don't have the full legis, or full statutory line by line to recite.
So again, the original law, was it also limiting to 1650, 1650 square feet living area? Was that something that was added in 2023?
To my knowledge, that was a 2023 act.
Okay.
Unique to the cities over 60,000.
And it may not apply in this particular case because I don't know that it matters to these apartments, but I, one of the questions I had is, it sounds to me like listening to the legislature talk about this, as well as some of the discussion. Some people believe it's an average of 1650, some others believe it's a limit of 1650. I don't, I don't know if you have an opinion on that or not. Maybe it's not important right now.
I don't, and that, there's a lot of ambiguity in that piece that I think it would benefit a lot of people to be clarified.
The other, the other limitation, of course, is 100 housing units. That's per eligible district, okay? So a census tract or a city that's less than 60,000 would have a limit of up to 100 housing units per year. And one of my questions, one of my questions earlier was, census proposed to be 108 And one of my questions earlier was, census proposed to be 108 apartments, do you view that as three buildings, or do you view that as 108 units? You already used the word units when you described this.
Yep.
A couple of times. And so if there's 36 apartments per each building, that's 108 apartments for three buildings. That's in excess of the 100 limit, if you consider an apartment a unit. So how can you do that unless eight of the apartments are not eligible for this?
Yeah. So prerequisite, those limitations don't apply to this project. This project is not a city with over 60,000 residents.
Okay. So that limit of 100 units does not apply in this case, is your opinion?
Correct. I do concur with you that there's a lot of ambiguity in how unit counts.
I'll describe my research later, how much I've done to research this. I'll explain that later. But thank you for your answers.
Of course.
Mayor George Lee, welcome.
You know, it's kind of interesting that a year ago, I just retired. And if you'd asked me, I'd be here supporting... I didn't even know what RHID was at that time. And I think after working at this for a few days, I think I know less now than I did before. But there's just a few comments and a few thoughts that I have in terms of representing my community. I know that you're kind of in a difficult spot, at least as far as I'm concerned, because you received a recommendation to turn this RHID down. I think there are a couple of things that were mentioned that maybe in the analysis that's been done might be a little bit flawed. I don't think it's fair to compare an RHID to a TIF. The RHID concept and idea was established in 1998. There's several projects across the state that have been completed. None of these RHIDs have ever been denied or turned down. It might not be a bad idea, instead of just looking at TIFs, to maybe make a comparison with the other RHID projects that have been completed in the last five years, to do an analysis and maybe determine some type of impact and see the impact that those things have had in other communities. This is a process that's been going on long before I became mayor. I think we're in like step five. There's been several thousand dollars spent by the developer getting us to this point. And the negotiation of the actual agreement that took place between the city and the developer put a cap on this at 3.5 million. I do not believe that the actual qualifying base investments for infrastructure, that that's the maximum of what that was. I don't necessarily know exactly what the details are, but I believe that apart from the land, that there's enough debt or enough infrastructure cost apart from the land that will get us to the 3.5 million. Now, from my standpoint as mayor, we don't intend to fund this until the project's completed. We're definitely not going to advance any debt to get this project and keep it moving. And so I don't see where there's really any economic risk in terms of the project. We're not going to take any on to get it done. And the developer has the means through his financial wherewithal to take care of it. I know there's a concern about the amount of money being set up over time, but I just want to point out that we're partners in this. Our exposure and what we're giving up, if you look at it that way, is over $1 million. So we're not asking the county to do something that we're not willing to do ourselves. I mean, we see a tremendous benefit in this. We're kind of at a point in terms of our community development where this is a glaring gap within our community. If we add a project like this, a senior housing project, maybe working with Mennonite Housing, the population density is probably going to tip us over the point where restaurants, some other retail things will develop. We're really close on some of these things as it is right now. Our community in 2023 paid to the county for fire protection, $1,028,000. And the inflation rate the last three years for the growth in our assessed valuation... I mean, we're going to read my scribbling writing here, but we've gone from basically in 2021, $51 million, 2022, $58 million, 2023, $67 million. Another, and that's a 13% increase, a 15% increase. We're looking probably at another 15% increase this year. Herbert H. Bishop III, who was principal at Manhattan High, for 40 years, taught me in seventh grade math, the rule of 72. You take the interest rate or that percentage divided into 72, and that'll give you a number in terms of the doubling of that amount. So based on a 12% increase over the next three or four years, that $1 million that we pay going forward will double in six years. So our contribution just for fire protection will go from $1 million to $2 million. Now, I raise that point because there's been concern, I know if you add those apartments, there's going to be additional need for fire protection, EMS probably more than fire. But I think that the bulk payment from our community will cover the apartments and the money that'll go to cover those services. The school, the school district, you know, they give up about 20-some mils in tax revenue. They'll still receive 20, I think 20 or 26 mils through this process. So their contribution isn't quite as high as ours. I mean, we've talked about the supply and demand issue. The $2 million for the housing grant, that affordable housing commitment is for five years. I think that right now in our community, if you don't have $1,400 or $1,500, you can't even rent a little bungalow. There's a bungalow across the street from me that's 1,000 square feet. It was remodeled, and those people are paying $1,400 for that little bungalow property. So if moderate housing for 100 units brings an additional 300 or 400 people into the community, we've got people, I think, from campaigning that have moved in some of the other, the medical lodge complex that's income-based. But there are people moving from Western Kansas, moving to Goddard to try to find affordable housing. So I think this project will definitely be a great benefit to our community. You know, I know that whether you guys say yes or no, the sun's going to come up tomorrow morning. I mean, there are other things that I hope to continue to work with the commissioners with, and I would just ask you to think about the citizens of Goddard. We deserve to have nice things. And for whatever reason, over the last 50 years, we haven't been able to get things done with, it relates to moderately-based housing. So the chamber board met today, the support in the community from that group and others, I think, is really positive, and they would be pleased that you would go ahead and support and approve our project. That's all. Finished with that.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate your thoughts and sharing it. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Mayor, thank you for being here today. I appreciate it. A month and a half, two months ago, we didn't know anything about RSIDs coming to this area. And thanks to you and your city manager coming to talk to Brent, the manager, and I, we learned a lot more about it. And as a result, we had to do some quick research and figure out what's going on and look at the future of Sedgwick County. Because not just Goddard can do this, but we've got 20 cities in Sedgwick County. And so we actually, the staff put together with the commission's help, a policy on how that we're going to look at RHIDs in the future. So really, you spurred us to do a lot more research and get up to speed. I appreciate that. And I appreciate what's happening in Goddard. As I said, we've got 20 cities in the county. The majority of those are in my district out west, and I want to make sure that that district continues to grow and prosper. And it is. But I do have a couple of questions. When we met here a month and a half, two months ago, whenever it was, you talked about this 100 apartment. But at that time, you indicated that you were wanting seven of those. Is that still the case?
I think that was kind of a tongue-in-cheek comment. I mean, we've got four coffee shops in town. And when we got to the fourth one before I was on the council, they provided incentives that I wouldn't have done. I think that with each one of these projects, I think at one time, I've generally said two or three. One of the metrics that I thought might be an interesting way to measure these things is to take the percentage of the tax rate, so like say for the total tax for the fire district at $1 million, and then the portion of the deferment of the increment on any given year. And the percentage is the same for all the tax the county pays, but I think the first increment, when the project's fully completed, would be about $38,000 or $40,000. And you'd take that and divide that into the total amount of tax, and it'd be about 3%. I'm talking around numbers. But that would give you a measurement so that you put, say you put a cap on, we're not going to allow any community to have more than 10% of any increment above their annual tax that's being paid to the county. So that would kind of limit maybe us getting to seven. I'd be tickled just to get to one at this point.
Well, what concerns me a little bit is if you look at going two, three, four, five, six, every time you go another year and you add another one in the same location, it extends to 25 years. So that continues to push it down.
Well, but each individual contract, based on the payment, you know, they're not going to, will close the district. So when the taxes are paid, or the balance of the financing of the $3.5 million is paid, that closes that district. So I don't think they're as interrelated as what you're saying. I do think, though, too, by using that increment in terms of a percentage measurement that I'm talking about, then I would know that if the county's going to cap this at 10% of an increment based on the total tax we're paying every year, that puts a limit on me getting to five or six or seven. And then, but it also then kind of creates an even playing field as you go across the county, because all the different, you know, I'm sure, it seems like Mays has a gazillion apartments, but maybe Hayesville or Bel Air, wherever these things pop up, whether it's for urban infill and redoing existing housing, if you have some limit per each individual entity, then that cap creates the ability to control it and not let one person get seven and then somebody else gets two. I mean, I'm just trying to come up with metrics, not just for us. I mean, because to have a developer spend the kind of money it took to get this to this point, you don't want somebody to spend that kind of money. And then you know automatically, based on the increments and based on the data, that's a data-driven decision point, everybody knows right before you start, well, Goddard's maxed out with the three projects or the two projects that they have, wherever you'd set that percentage. And then that eliminates that, you know, escalation of having hundreds of these done across the county.
Well, you just mentioned Mays is building a tremendous number of apartments, and I agree with that. My question is, is that how can they build apartments and make money on them, but Goddard, you can't build apartments in Goddard and make money on them? What's the difference?
Joe, I mean, that's kind of getting beyond my level of expertise, to be quite honest. I'm a banker, so, and I'm retired at that.
Well, I don't understand the difference.
That's fine. I can get some assistants here, help answer some of these technical questions.
Joe, can you answer my question?
Commissioner, can I back up to your first one real quick?
Sure.
On the concern, basically, that I think what you're getting at is a city can adopt a housing needs analysis with more than one area beyond this project, in that each project that has its own development plan can have its own 25 years. Is that what you're getting at with comment number one?
Let me call Brent back up so that he can explain it better than I can. Can you explain how these get extended beyond 25 years?
So the, that's one of the findings for adverse effect that we put in the policy, because we wanted to make sure that the district had contiguous boundaries with the project. So if we do that, and this project does do that, it can't be extended beyond 25 years because they can't have another project. So if within an area, an RHID, you had a smaller area that had a project, and then a second project was proposed within the same RHID, we have to go through the whole process again, your only option at that point, if you didn't like project two, would be to nullify the district. That seems to nullify the one that's already in existence. So that's one of the reasons to protect us, as well as the city, school, everybody, and the developer. Make sure the boundaries are contiguous, and they have done that in this case.
Okay. Thanks, Brent. Do you understand my concern now?
I do, and I think Mr. Sheldon addressed it just now. This project has contiguous boundaries, and the plan can't be extended more than 25 years. As it pertains to point number two about why projects work in Wichita versus Mays versus elsewhere, I don't know. I haven't seen the specific budget for those projects. I haven't seen the sources. I haven't seen the interest rates and when they were financed, if they were pre-2021 or whatnot. All I can tell you is that this project does not, that's part of why it was awarded an MIHRPA grant. There's a tremendous need for it. It doesn't work without incentives.
Well, I truly don't understand why your builder can't build it and other builders can. That is confounding to me. You started your briefing saying that there's a great need for housing in Goddard. So the manager had MABCD pull all of the different developments that are going on throughout the entire county. And so I went in and extracted out of that Goddard, just so I could have an idea. And it appears on the different developments that have started since 2021, and there are a number of them. Goddard Trails End, 216 units. Big Arm Addition, 33 units. Arbor Creek Second Addition, 51 units. Bridger Maple Addition, 172 units. 23rd South Addition, 217 units. Dove Estate Second Addition, 41 units. McCullough Addition, one unit. And then just a couple of weeks ago, in the Wichita Business Journal, there was a nice article about two new additions, Rusty Creek going into Goddard, there was 67 units, Stonewater with another 50. You add all that up, and that's 848 units that are coming into Goddard. So I know that those aren't apartments. These are houses. But you can't say that there's going to be a shortage if you've got 848 that are on the books right now, that could be built here. All they have to do is go. So that's commentary. But my question to you is, how do we say yes to this builder? And we've got hundreds of builders in Sedgwick County, and they're all, as soon as they see this, we set a precedence. And that precedence is going to say, hey, all we need is an RHID, and we don't have to put specials anymore. We just build them, and government will take care of the specials. So the future looks kind of bleak to me if we approve this, because that's a precedence that every builder around is going to say, I want a piece of this, because it lowers the cost of my building, and I can sell these houses at a cheaper rate, because I don't have to worry about specials anymore. rate because I don't have to worry about specials anymore. So how do I address that? What's the future look like for us?
Yeah. So first, going backwards again, first comment, as you highlighted, the need to Goddard is unique to multifamily housing and the units that you mentioned aren't rental housing. What Goddard's housing study shows is exactly what you recited, that they've seen growth in owner-occupied housing. What they haven't had is any multifamily housing, and they haven't had it in 50 years. As it pertains to, you know, kind of the opening the floodgates theme, again, I reiterate, each project has to be assessed on its own merits. This is a big county with lots of different municipalities with different needs. You will have a chance, if developers come forward and want to do RHIDs, you will have a chance to review the development plan each, in each and every instance, and you will have that same veto right that you have today. To the contrary, Commissioner, I think this sets an extremely high bar about what the county will support. This is a community with zero rental housing. The bar is you are the only rental housing that has come across this community in 50 years. You're going to have a negative return without incentives, and you're going to have a 1.8% return without this RHID, but without this others. I do understand the concern, Commissioner. I think each project needs to be assessed on its own merits, and I think this project stands very strong on its own merits.
But we do look at return on investments every time that we try and use government taxpayers' money for anything. And over the years, we've moved it around a little bit. It was 1.5 at one point. Currently, we're at least 1.1. This doesn't come close to our return on investment for the amount of money that we're going to put into it. You know, you can put any figures you want down, but we work with WSU and they, I trust WSU, when they come up with 0.28 to 1 and 0.18 to 1, that's not a very good return on investment for our taxpayers. And what we're doing is then we're shifting the tax burden for all of the services that Sedgwick County provides from that development to all the rest of the taxpayers in Sedgwick County, and that's not fair.
I understand that concern, Commissioner, and I'm glad you brought up the WSU study because I did want to address one of the comments earlier from previous speaker. We answered questions as they were presented from WSU on that front. Their model does a lot of great things. What it wasn't equipped to do is model an RHID. So myself and City's Bond Council has answered questions to help them model. As it pertains to the cost benefit ratio, remember their study goes 20 years, the exact term of the RHID. The ratio is not unique to this project in that it's going to have a very limited return on investment during the RHID term. That's because the statute, not just in Goddard, in every single Kansas municipality, it allows either all, all of county's revenue is pledged, all of fire district's revenues pledged, or none is. There's very little study without taking into account all of the other benefits I mentioned earlier that's going to have a positive ratio. And that's why I said it's important to understand that these aren't direct costs to the county today, and these aren't revenues that are there today. They only happen with the project. And I think that's why WSU, you know, qualified it as, yes, it's a cost to the county, but we need to show it as a benefit because the revenues don't exist today.
Well, first of all, I appreciate Goddard. I really do. It's in my district. I appreciate them coming and talking to us early on so that we could get smarter on this project. I'm just concerned about the impact on the county and the feasibility of this thing as it's moving forward. So I hope you understand that, that I still want to help you all out other ways that we can, but I'm not sure that I can help you out this way. Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. I have a few questions. In your presentation, you'd mentioned this is really going to be aimed towards moderate income levels. What does moderate income to you mean? And what are the rental rates for these apartments going to go for?
Yeah, I'll answer the first piece, or the second piece first, which is we don't have specific rent ranges today. I think a lot of that, A, I don't think the project can move forward without incentives, but I think understanding the full sources and use of budgets is critical. Second, what is moderate income housing? It's got a very specific definition under the, under KHRC. We're required to, it's not specific rent ranges. We're required to income-qualified tenants that they have to fall within a specific range for every year during the first five years. There's going to be a covenant recorded against the property that requires this project to adhere to that. I don't have those rent ranges in front of me today. Very specific threshold that applies to all MIH projects across the state.
You know, we've had the conversation now publicly a handful of times about RHID and where we want our focus to be, and it really is affordable housing. How can we ensure that this is going to be affordable if we can't even know the ranges of income level that you're trying to target?
Sorry, you don't know the, you're saying?
How can we have guarantee that this, what you're proposing, is going to be moderate or affordable housing if we have no idea what your range of moderate housing is?
Couple of reasons. One, you will know the income range. I apologize, I don't have that right in front of me. The day I was, I was prepped to address the RHID, not necessarily the grant. I am happy to send that to you so you can see the exact income ranges that our tenants will have to be qualified in. As it pertains to how can you have comfort without knowing the exact rent today that we're going to charge? Know what I showed you earlier, this project, the only way this project succeeds in addition to the incentives is if we obtain a specific level of occupancy. We're not going to be able to charge rents beyond what the tenants in those income ranges can afford, or else this project has failed and it will lose money.
Brent, did you want to add something to that?
Commissioner, since we learned that this project had received the moderate income housing grant, we contacted KHRC to determine how that was going to be applied, what limitations there might be. We were advised by KHRC that the income guidelines are between 60 and 150% of median income. Median income can be defined, whether it's for the city of Goddard, for the MSA, for Sedgwick County, they can take whichever is higher. So if we took approximately $60,000 as the median income in Sedgwick County, these would need to be affordable to someone making $90,000 a year. 30% of that generates about a $2,200 a month rent rate. I'm not suggesting that that's what they're going to charge. I'm just saying that the rates could fall between $900 and $2,200 a month.
I don't know if $2,200 is what I would consider affordable or moderate. So I have concerns just on that piece alone. I echo the comments that Commissioner Dennis made. We see development everywhere happening right now, and apartment complexes coming up in multiple areas. And I guess I cannot understand what makes this development unique, that all the other ones are able to do this, but this one can't. I just, I'm trying, I'm going through all the stuff that Brent has sent. I'm going through your PowerPoint, and I just, I don't, I don't understand why this one is special compared to the other ones. I do have another question, and I, I don't know if I'm just missing something or I'm having a hard time following some of this information. So Brent, I was reading what you sent to us on Monday, which are the adverse effects analysis that you sent to all commissioners. When I read that and I read this, there's a Goddard Sports LLC, there's a Goddard Housing LLC. Goddard Sports is about $17,000 delinquent in property taxes. So who, who is, like, I just, I'm trying to understand, is that the group who's delinquent in taxes asking for this? Is it Goddard Housing that's on, I just, I'm trying to understand who this is, and I can't, I can't follow the line.
Commissioner, that's another thing that we always want to know is, is the developer qualified? Have they done this type of work before? Do they have the financial capacity to carry it forward? Goddard Sports LLC is the current owner of the site for this potential RHID. Goddard Sports LLC also owns all the property adjoining it, including the property that's in the Starbond district. From our understanding of the development agreement, Goddard Housing LLC would be the developer of the project. They're going to acquire either through purchase or transfer of some sort this land. The delinquent taxes that you refer to are Goddard Sports LLC, and they're on this parcel as well as some others right there within that, that complex.
Okay. Well, I think that's another problematic thing that I have as I'm going through all of this data. My last question is more around what's being presented by Goddard and what's being presented by Sedgwick County are significantly different. How do we, how did that happen? I mean, have we seen all of the data from, where is the line of confusion happening here that they would be so out of touch with each other?
You speaking specifically to the financials?
Yes.
The first set of financials that we received were a snapshot on year three. That was what I think was depicted on the slide earlier. Those showed this project with no incentives and this project with all incentives. That would include the $2 million, the $665,000, about $6 million in incentives. We asked for, to see a multi-year financial statement pro forma that showed the existing incentives, that 2.6 million in grant and sales tax exemption. We didn't see that until yesterday, and that was just for one year. So what I did was took a look at taking the $2 million and spreading it out over a five-year period, front-loading it, and they get it in year one or two. Using all of the numbers that were provided by the city through the developer, I can come up with a return on investment between 7% and 9%. Depending on how this land purchase or transfer is structured, that could get up to 10%. One of the things that I found deficient in this financial statements that were provided to us is one of the benefits of real estate investing is you get a non-cash expense called depreciation. It's not considered in any of the financial statements that we've received from either developer or the city. So that also provides, it lowers that taxable impact, therefore increasing the cash that's received to the developer. So we're seeing positive cash on cash, positive monthly cash flow, and a positive return. I don't see a reason it couldn't go forward as it stands today.
Okay, I appreciate, just trying to get a better understanding of this. I mean, I think we all know where we're at as far as our community feels overtaxed, and that burden is so heavy, to the point that I get calls that people are worried they're going to be taxed out of their homes. And I really struggle. I think there is a place for RHID, I really do, but I just, I don't know if this is it. There's too many questions that I still have that I don't necessarily feel like I have the exact answer that I would feel comfortable with going forward as far as the income level and some of the things that we just, we just discussed. But I just want to make sure that at the end of the day, if we pass this, it sets a precedence for other ones, and if we deem them feasible without this, we would still have to, we wouldn't have to. But we have a precedence now if we pass this to pass those. And one of these might not necessarily break the backs of taxpayers. But if we're talking, how many could we possibly have every year? And what does that look like? That's a significant amount of money, and I just, it would have to be a unique project and something that is really needed and proven that it's going to be that affordable housing and that piece of it before I would feel comfortable passing these. So I think an apartment complex in Goddard is great. I mean, I was really appreciative to be able to drive around Goddard the other day and see everything that's happening. It's a really cool place. The coffee shop we went to was fantastic. It was really awesome. But I, I just can't see us incentivizing this more on the backs of the rest of the taxpayers. So I, that's where I'm at. And feel free if you want to respond to that, but that's, those are my comments and questions. Thank you.
I guess just a small point is, it's not the taxpayers, it's the tax from the actual property itself. So once the property's built, the property itself is going to generate the tax. So I live in Goddard, so none of my taxes are going to go to pay this back. The property itself will generate the tax to pay it back. So each and one of these individual properties will generate the tax. So it's not, it's not a broadly-based taxpayer paying. And I, I mean, so I just think that the specifics of the generation point of the tax, it's not taxes, it's the tax from the property.
I'll say it differently than.
Okay.
I, I am concerned that as we have EMS calls and fire and whatever it is, and we're diverting resources here to an area that's not paying taxes currently, and the rest of us are paying those taxes, then there, there is a cost associated to taxpayers. So when I say taxpayers, this is on the backs of taxpayers, that's one of the things that I'm.
Sure. And I guess my, my point that I was making about the growth of the check that we write, like for fire protection, a million dollars this year, that as we're growing in five or six years, that's going to be a $2 million check. And so I'm thinking that we have, that much of, that much cash would cover that incremental expense because of the growth. And it's not just the appreciation in value, but it's the increase of the number of, Commissioner Dennis talking about the different developments. I mean, I, we're well on our way to having another 15% increase. So, so I think it's, it's, there's a, from my standpoint, for what, what we give up in this, the benefit of the community as a whole looks at that and says, we'll, we're continuing to grow, the pot that we're sending, the amount of money we're sending for that would cover that incremental, incremental expense.
And more along those lines, I think that's one reason why we look at return on investment, and what does this project mean? And our staff has been very clear that it doesn't meet the minimum qualifications with this project that we would need to move forward from where I'm comfortable. So, thank you.
Thank you. A couple of questions. So I'm trying to analyze the capital stack, and I know there's 3.5 million RHID being proposed. 2.6 million's already committed, 600,000's a sales tax exemption, and then there's a grant in the amount of $2 million, so 2.6 million there. What is this area in the RHID application? Is this also in the Starbonds district?
It is.
It's in the part of this, so is that calculation part of, is the sales tax, the Starbonds is, so I'm trying to figure out, this sales tax exemption for 600K, that is not a Starbonds-associated exemption?
No. Through the Starbond Act, the sales tax exemption will only apply to properties constructed with those bond proceeds.
Understood. So there's, this area has a Starbonds, a sales tax exemption, a Kansas housing grant, and then the application for 3.5 million. So I'm trying to understand the deck and the incentive deck that's a part of that. What, what options, this might be a question for Brent or counsel, what options does the applicant, meaning Goddard, have in the future if this does not, if this is nullified? What options do they have? Can they amend an application? Can they make changes to an application? And I'm trying to understand how this works for the applicant. And they called in Thomas Henry.
Thomas Henry, Assistant County Counselor. I believe that it would have to go through the process again. I don't, I don't recall seeing anything in the statutes that allow for an amendment and circumventing the whole process.
Okay. I appreciate some answers there. I'll tell you, on my end, there's some tough balances here. The first is, and we publicly said it from the bench, and I publicly said it in other places, that I believe that the, that we are actually in a housing crisis in this community. I think the data suggests that. The work on the homelessness task force suggests that we have a housing crisis. We need all levels of housing in this community. And we particularly need housing, sub-a-thousand-dollar rent rate housing. That's a significant need here, and the market fundamentals are not producing that in many ways. Those that have those homes that typically go out and buy new homes and their houses become available for rent rates, those individuals are saying, I'm going to keep my 3% interest rate. I'm not, so the cycle, the supply chain, if you will, is the fundamentals are off. So we have a housing crisis, in my opinion, at all levels. The other balance is I loudly want to advocate and empower the cities in Sedgwick County, the 20 cities in Sedgwick County. It squarely fits in my purview of what the role of county government is. But there's a balance in regards to incentives. And I, we should not be incentivizing things that can't happen if the market can meet that demand. And I think that's really the crutch of it for me, is the but for. And I think that's really the crutch of it for me, is the but for. That's the crutch for me, is the, the genuine but for. Can this happen but for the incentive? I mean, I think that's where the data is conflicting in many regards. When I talk to my folks in Mays, they have 1,800 housing units under development. Park City's got a significant house, Goddard has significant housing growth, but is it the housing development that we're shooting for, this affordable housing? That's the question at hand. When I talk to city administrators, three of them in my district, they have concerns that it's, this is not going to be the first application, and if other cities are getting involved with applications, that they will be forced to get involved with applications to appease the developers are building in their communities. So we're not looking at one application that's coming, we're looking at 15, 18, 20 applications that's coming. So that's why I think, with all due respect, the due diligence has been significant for a very important reason, because we're not talking about deferring taxes of just, you know, $1.4 million for 25 years. We're going to have to compound that number, multiple applications. I mean, this is a 10, 15, $20 million conversation around Sedgwick County over the next 25 years. So that's why this matters. This is important because this is a significant deal. And, and I talked to developers, developers that have not got these types of incentives, they will be asking for these types of incentives moving forward if these things start flowing. And that's the but for conversation in a, in a particularly challenged property tax market. That's it. So I just say, that's a comment, that's not a question, Thomas. It's a comment to where I just think it's important to layer that in so everybody knows that this is a, we want to empower the cities. We want to be great partners with this and find ways to get you the needs you have. But it, the only factor isn't just saying yes, the only, there's a much greater but for factor in regards to these, and we've got to make sure that we have a playing field that, all throughout Sedgwick County that's beneficial. So, but that's just a comment to that. Other questions or, or comments from the bench? Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just curious, this is maybe for one of the applicants, I'm not sure. You guys provided a spreadsheet with some calculations on it. Were you involved in that, sir? Or you know about it?
Yep. Yes, sir.
You, you prepared this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. So this talks a little bit about, it seems to me like the break even point, but if you, if the RHID was for 3.5, looks like in year 20 is when things are paid off. Is your, is your understanding that RHID would be suspended at that point?
Yeah. By, by development agreement, that is the way it works. The, the term lasts for the, the earlier, the term expires the earlier of, 25 years are when the RHID cap has been reached.
Okay. And to get to $3.5 million, the county on, again, our numbers are going to change because, again, there's a appraised value which goes up over time, and the assessed value of that goes up over time, and therefore the amount of the abatement is going up over time. Let's just throw out there an average of around roughly $70,000 a year. Actually, it's, I actually have it calculated here, but I don't see where I put the number down. Anyway, it's around $70,000 a year to the county for about 20 years. And at that point, and you had a slide that showed this, but at that point, this goes back on the tax rolls because it's paid off, right?
Correct.
So the question to us is, is that, is that, you know, what is the actual cost to the county? And one of the questions I had, I don't really know how to calculate this, but we could look at other apartment complexes around and say, how many calls per year on average? You know, what's the actual cost to the county? What's the actual benefit to the county after it's paid off? I mean, there, there is a benefit. We do support TIF districts that are, in very many ways are structured very similar to this, although they're never, as far as I know, they're not usually used for housing. One of the things about TIF districts that I've always talked about, I don't like about TIFs, is that if you have two things that are similar to each other, you're incentivizing one versus the other, it creates an unfairness in that playing field of whatever that is. And so Menards across the street from Lowe's is a good example, where Menards received a TIF district and Lowe's did not, and they're virtually within a three-minute walk of each other. And that's an example where I didn't like the TIF because I think it was unnecessary, and I don't know that there was any reason to incentivize a Menards to come into a community. They are very successful businesses. I don't think there's any question they would make money there. But that did happen, and so that's an example where I don't really like the idea of upsetting the fair playing field. In this case, that's one of the concerns here, is that housing is a very big industry. One of the reasons we have, we have property values going up so fast right now is there's a shortage of housing. So, and, you know, and part of me says, I, I like the idea of doing something that, that creates more affordable housing sooner than later, because that will dampen, that'll, that'll tamp down, if you will, the, the, the high, I should say, the inflationary aspect of what we see right now, and appraised values are going up so much. So I guess, I see there's some, some reason to do that. But I do, I do understand the points previously made here. I don't know for sure that the but for is real. I know our, our staff has said that it's, they don't believe that it is. One of my questions, I guess, is the $3.5 million, can you be very specific? I don't know if you can answer the question, or maybe somebody else can. What specifically is that $3.5 million for? What's it going to, what's, what is it earmarked to pay for?
Yep. Horizontal utilities and infrastructure. At one point, the statute is, has a very limited subset of costs that RHID revenues can be used to finance. That includes land acquisition, and that includes horizontal development.
It does, it does include land.
This project does not, this statute allows for land acquisition. This project, the developer voluntarily amended its budget, removed land acquisition. This is only paying for site work, horizontal utilities and infrastructure.
And infrastructure means like parking lot, things like?
Yeah. Parking lot, utilities, site work, groundwork, grading, paving.
So out of $17 million project, there's $3.5 million worth that's tied to that?
3.4, I think, is what, what our contractors have estimated.
I think, okay. Just so I understand, earlier in this discussion, the number was still with 3.5.
That's the maximum. Yep.
That's the maximum.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The one was 3.5 earlier, in the earlier discussion, maybe a month ago, did that include land at that time, and it's changed to that's other? I think it may have included land, maybe it doesn't now, but can you please explain that to me?
Sure. At, at that point in time, land was shown as an, as a cost that was eligible for reimbursement, and our horizontal utilities, site work, and infrastructure was estimated, I think somewhere in the two to $2 million range. There was a big catchall called, I think it's just vertical development or, or building construction. And looking back through the project, as the project's gotten more narrowly defined, what we've been able to find is that there, there was a significant amount of site work and utilities in that line item, such that we were underestimating the amount of eligible costs, and developer voluntarily removed land acquisition as an eligible cost. Even though it's eligible by statute, it will not be reimbursed.
So the application went to the State Department of Commerce, it did not include the land acquisition?
When Commerce approves this project, it's at the housing needs analysis level. Commerce would, did not, does not approve development plans.
Okay. And if that number comes in below that estimate, does that just mean that this pays off? If this is approved, this was to go forward? If that, if those actual costs come in less than that estimate, then what happens?
Yeah. You're, you're saying if, if we had $3 million of eligible costs, that effectively becomes our cap. You can't reimburse costs beyond what's statutorily eligible.
I may call up Brenton in just a second, but one of the, one of the questions I continue to have is, is about the 25 years versus some type of arbitrary suspension of the RHID or rescinding of the RHID when the dollars become whole. And I know we've had some controversy on this. I saw an email this morning came out, and I wanted to clarify from both of you, if you both agree or disagree, or maybe there's still disagreement, I don't know. But is it, is it able to be absolutely capped at the conclusion of when RHID pays off the eligible infrastructure pieces are identified? Does it suspend it at that point? Yes or no?
The agreement, I think, would call that it be suspended at that point in time. The county, as the administrator of property tax, wouldn't have the ability to stop it or suspend it until we're notified by the city that all eligible costs have been paid. So we take an affirmative action on part of the city to tell the county treasurer to stop collecting and distributing to the RHID.
Okay. And if they did not do that, and we were, we were aware of it, but they did not notify, so would we go seek that, or what would, I mean?
I don't think we have any authority to close it until the end of 25 years unless we're notified prior to that time. Now, if two or three years' worth of taxes were collected and distributed to the RHID, and then we find out that they shouldn't have been, and the city tells us it was 3.3 million, you collected more than that, we go through a process of, of redistributing those funds back to the county, back to the city, back to the school district, all those funds that levy a tax that went to the RHID.
Okay. The city does have a, a reason they would probably want to do that, because they have $80,000, roughly $80,000 a year that they would not also collect if they did not make that point. And when they did that for themselves, they would, I'm sure, would do it for the city, the schools as well as the county at that, at that time, right?
Correct.
So they have an incentive for the city to, to be interested in seeing that end as well. Okay. Let's see, other questions I might have here? I'm still a little confused on the 108 units versus 100 units. I, I looked up the statute a minute ago. I do see that in there, but I also see on the very beginning of that statute section, it talks about cities. I'm not so sure that, there's, it's a little hard to follow exactly, so it takes a bit of a legal mind to, to wade your way through that statute. I'm not so sure that's exactly true still, but do we have an opinion on the 100, 100 units versus 108 being allowed?
Thomas Henry, Assistant County Counselor. We're in agreeance with Mr. Oaks on, on that matter. If it, that limitation only applies to cities that have a population of greater than 60,000.
Okay. All right. Well, I think the biggest, the biggest question remains, I'll just say this, that the legislation, I think, was, wasn't understood by the legislature as well as I think it should have been. I've talked to legislators since this passed in 2023. There are about, there's about six or seven YouTube videos I've went and watched. I can send the links to anybody who's interested in, in listening to those, as well as, I have got the testimony that was submitted to the committees, I have that here. Also talked to the, the chairman of the House committee that actually carried the bill, and some of the things being discussed today. Again, maybe some of this is previous understandings, I think, have been somewhat clarified today. So I appreciate some better, a better understanding of some of the things that we've talked about today. But some of the stuff that's in the, the laws, we understand, as it's being utilized, is, I don't think was as clean, even, even our attorney from the, from the applicant, he agrees, it's not very well written. I mean, there's a lot of confusion that can be seen in this legislation. It's not very clear sometimes. And I'll just say that I, I think, no matter whether you're a proponent or opponent of where that legislation currently sits, I, I think that the, the state would be smart to do some work to clean that up with some trailer legislation. I'd like to make sure the county gets involved in that one way or the other, because this is going to, this is going to come back. I do think the previous comments about an urban community like this, we are going to see a lot of these coming at us, and so that is a concern. I, I do think, I do think we have a shortage of housing here, but whether or not we ought to be approving these, if they're not necess, if there may not be a but for in many of these cases, maybe there is. I'll just share this also, that, again, the stack of legislate, this is a stack of testimony that I have from the legislature, most of this came from large communities like Sedgwick County. We didn't submit anything in this, but Johnson County did, as well as other, Altha and other communities did submit supportive testimony. KAC was, provided positive testimony, as well as LKM and a few others. I haven't linked all this testimony, if anybody wants to see any of this, read through it. I, I read, did my best, Overland Park's another one. I'd be glad to send this to anybody who's interested, but there was only, I believe, one opponent in that. By the way, just so you know, it was Senate Bill 34 last year that tried to move this over to census tracts in cities like Wichita. They, they amended in the housing tax credits, and that was Senate Bill 37, they did that in the House. And then when it got to the Senate, they trans, the conference committee report, they stuffed all that into Senate Bill 17. And there was a mirrored bill, both on the House and the Senate side. So it went, went back to the House as a, as a up and down vote on the conference committee report, and they were not able to make any changes at, at that time. I've talked to lots of legislators on this. Virtually no one understands this very well, I can say that. So I think we have some work to do. I'll just say also, I don't, I don't blame anybody for using the tools in the toolbox.
No.
I think that's, we have to understand, the tools are in the toolbox, and everyone is in the business to be a successful developer, successful businessman. I don't blame anybody, anybody for using the tools in the toolbox. I'm not so sure the tools are right for Sedgwick County. But for them to make an attempt to use those tools, I'm not so sure I want to be, be personal and critical to someone who's doing their best to use the tools given to them. I just think this is, this is really pushing Sedgwick County in a direction that feels uncomfortable. So I don't know that we're ready for it just yet. I would, I don't know if this will pass today, it doesn't sound like it will. We've heard enough, enough people speak against it so far. I don't, it's, I think it's unlikely for this, to get three votes at this point, but if that's the case, I do think, you know, just a couple of points here. If we, if we had some control on how much, how much was abated, and how many years it was abated, and, and break up the trifecta, or this, I should say, rather than they make, well, the state collects their dollars in this, but the city, schools, county, and fire district in this case don't. Those dollars are, are siphoned off to pay for infrastructure and, and horizontal utilities, it sounds like. If we had a way to have, you know, allow certain jurisdictions to participate and allow other jurisdictions to not participate, that might be a way for this to be more useful. I think it's, you know, if, I think Goddard could abate their, they could earmark their tax dollars to help out this developer, I think, under, under existing laws that don't even need this. And I, I would also say that what happened in 2023 with Senate Bill 34, and then ultimately Senate Bill 17, other than providing, who, which cities are eligible to use these, these things, I'm not sure it did much else. And you already mentioned this has been around since 1998. I don't think we have a good understanding, understanding exactly how much this has been used since 1998. I think, I don't think we have a good understanding of that either. So I have studied this a lot, I've read, I've read a lot, I've listened to a lot, and I, to me, I still feel a little bit uncomfortable with this whole, this whole, this whole thing. I think there's some work to do. I don't know where we are as a commission today, but it comes right down to, I think, whether that but for is real. That's the one piece where we seem to have disagreement, and our county says one thing and the applicant says another. And that, to me, is the number one thing why we probably are going to disagree today. That's the piece. And by the way, I've read, you had another handout today in your, your PowerPoint slide, does the analysis. I have some, whether it be right now or some other time, I could talk about this, but I have questions on your analysis here that are not really, I understand it pretty well what you put on paper here, but I don't, I don't know that I agree necessarily with what's on the page here. So anyway, I'll stop talking for now. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Minster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, Commissioner Howe pointed out some really good, a little bit of history and some communication with the state legislature, and as most of us know, Jim knows how to navigate his way through bills and, and who sponsors them and how they're voted. And in discussion with Jim, myself, I felt, I feel strongly that we, as a, as a, one of the four populous counties, that this has a real impact. We've talked about how, or I feel that we need to go to Topeka next session and try to add, just allow some, some flexibility, the way that the county's backed in right now. The county has no flexibility on, you know, you've all been involved in zoning cases where something as simple as a, as a berm, or a, you know, or a fence or something. We, we can't say anything. I think one of the comments in your presentation, it jarred my memory, that said, you know, we don't have, we do not, does the county have any flexibility in, in the, the comment about floodgates or, or an outpouring of others? I've probably as close to developers as, as most of us here on, or any of us on the county, and I've had some, some pretty good phone calls with developers, or that, I think what Commissioner, or Chairman Beatty said about, it, it's unpredictable how, how much could come at us really quickly, and, and the impact. come at us really quickly, and the impact of what that would be to provide, to continue to provide fire services, and EMS, and not even talking about the calls to 911, and all the, there's a cost component that the county has to provide. And so this revenue and return on investment and all that stuff is a good conversation, but the reality is there is a cost to provide these basic services. And there is, there is, well, in this case, there's zero revenue to support any of those services. But, so, I will, regardless of how this vote goes today, I will be a big advocate to help explain to Topeka to just allow a little bit of flexibility to the, to the school district and the agencies that have a say-so in approving these RHID applications. I feel bad for the applicant, meaning the applicant that is the developer, because the developer has attorneys, I see that, but the way RHID, why I understand it, is the applicant is the city itself. It's not, it's not the developer that's taken a lot of the burden to get this done. So that's just my two cents in listening to all this, and a little bit of the quick research I've been doing the last 60 days as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner. Other questions or comments? We'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Well, the commissioners that have spoken before me have some very good points. We all studied this in great detail. We weren't very smart a couple months ago on this at all, and I think we've had a fire hose worth of information, and we're a lot smarter than we were. As a result of that, I agree, we need some changes in the legislation, so that it matches the needs of Sedgwick County or any large county. I agree, this is a tool that Goddard saw, and I applaud them for research in that and finding this tool. In this case, I'm not sure that that's a tool that we can use. It really replaces specials, and I thought it was kind of interesting when we first started doing the policy, and Goddard was in the room. And we had a couple cases at that time that were specials, because a developer was building a new project, and they needed the infrastructure in order to be able to put it in, and we passed specials, so that those projects could move forward. And that those specials then were passed on to whoever owned the property, and they paid the specials and the property tax on it. In this case, those, and I know that it's an RHID, and it's a different definition, but it's still specials, is what you're asking for. And so if we waive those, somebody still has to pay for the services that we're going to provide for fire, and EMS, and 911, and the Sheriff's Department, Aging Department, Calm Care, every one of the departments that we have here in Sedgwick County rely on taxpayers' money. And if we don't get that taxpayers' money from this project, we got to get it somewhere else, because we still have to provide those services. No matter what, we're going to provide the services. That's our job. And right now, we're in the middle of budget discussions. So we spent all day yesterday. We're going to work on them again tomorrow. We started back in February. We're going to finish in August, and we're going to pass a budget of about $550 million. And of that, a big chunk of the money that we're spending is money that comes from people's property taxes. And honestly, out of all of the emails and phone calls that I get between some of the more important things, but number one is taxes. That's where I get the most people that are unhappy. And the reason that they call us is because the preparator works for us, even though he doesn't report to us, he reports to PVD. The treasurer works for us. We send the bills out, and then we distribute the money. But everything looks like we're the ones that are taxing them. And so I guarantee you that the public is not happy when they think that they're going to have to assume property tax of their property tax money, so that someone else can forego that property tax money. So I appreciate Goddard, I really do. I want you to understand that. And I continue to want to work forward with you in the future on different projects. It's just that, in this case, because of the way the legislature's written, legislation's written, we can either sit here and not say anything at this point, or we can deny it. That's our only two choices. We can't modify it, we can't do anything else. And at this point, I can't see that I can go out and look at the taxpayers that are complaining every single day about how much money that they're paying in taxes, and say, I deferred those taxes to you. So therefore, I'm going to make a very simple motion to deny.
Second.
Kirk Spence, Assistant County Counselor. And Commissioner, as part of your motion, as part of the statutory language focuses on a resolution. So as part of that motion to deny, would that also include finding the proposed RHID would have adverse effects on Sedgwick County pursuant to staff analysis, and thereby adopt the attached resolution to nullify the RHID?
Okay. We've got the resolution in front of us, the resolution finding adverse effect on Sedgwick County of a proposed reinvestment housing incentive district in the city of Goddard, Kansas. And I am going to make a motion that we deny that resolution. Is that what you need?
That you adopt the resolution nullifying the RHID.
All right. Back up again. Make a motion that we adopt the resolution finding adverse effect on Sedgwick County of a proposed reinvestment housing incentive district in the city of Goddard, Kansas.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion, and we have a second. Additional comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the motion is reasonable at this time. I would like to work with the state and get this law adjusted in such a way that it gives us a little bit more flexibility here in Sedgwick County. I don't think that it's exactly what we need here. I do think that there may be places around the county where a little bit of assistance might be necessary. I think, for example, Enfield is a great example, where Enfield might be a very appropriate place where we might need to have some type of help to get some housing back on its feet, so to speak. But with that, I think we need to work with the state. And let me just say once again, I feel badly for Goddard. I know you guys have done your very best. I just want to say thank you for being patient and flexible to allow us this chance to understand this to the level that we have. We've done a lot of work on this together, both your side and our side together have done a lot of work. And I hope we can work with you in the future. I wish you the very best. I don't want you guys to walk away angry. I hope you guys will still find a way to get this done. And I don't, hopefully, this is not a very, this is not meant to be personal to anybody. This is just intended to say right now, I don't think we're ready for this yet. So I will support the motion. Thank you again, Chairman.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Okay. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item O, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on May 2, 2024.
There it is, Joe Thomas.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting of May 2, results in four items for you this afternoon. Our first one is Training for Healthcare Providers on Substance Use Disorder and Clinical Practice Guidelines for Opioid Prescribing and Pain Management as Part of the OD-2A Local Grant for Health Department. And this recommendation is to accept the proposal from the University of Kansas Medical Center Research Institute, Incorporated, and that's in the amount of $66,574, and for a contract period running through August 31 of 2028. Item number two is Training for Healthcare and Public Safety Professionals on Screening, Brief Intervention, and Referral to Treatment as Part of the Overdose Prevention OD-2A Local Grant for Health Department. This recommendation is to accept the proposal from the University of Kansas Medical Center Research Institute, Incorporated. This amount is for $66,573, and it runs for the same period of time, which is through August 31 of 2028. Item number three is Fire and Emergency Communications Post-Incident Analysis and System Improvement Services for Manager's Office. Recommendation is to accept the proposal from Jensen Hughes, Incorporated. And item four, we are asking at this time for the emergency vehicle equipment. Recommendation at this time to defer it until the next commission meeting, which will be on May 22. With that being said, I'll try to answer any questions you may have and recommend approval.
Okay. We have four items. The request from Joe is to defer item four for the emergency vehicle equipment. Do we have any questions or comments? Okay. Then I'll make a motion to approve the recommendations of the Board and Bids and Contracts, with the exception of item four.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent Agenda.
Ms. Stoltz.
Good afternoon. Chairman and Commissioner Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items P through Z.
Okay, Commissioners, we've all had a chance to go through the consent agenda. Any questions or comments? Okay. I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda, items P through Z.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Okay, next item, please.
Committee reports.
Do we have any committee reports? That light's not going on, so, next item, please.
Other.
We have some other. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. First of all, I've got a lot of people to thank tonight. I put this hat up here at the beginning of the meeting, because I had the opportunity to travel on Kansas Honor Flight recently. And the first group that I really want to thank are...
Whoop, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I've got a lot of people that I need to thank. Last week, I had the opportunity to travel on Kansas Honor Flight, and they do a fantastic job. 143 of us went to Washington, DC on Monday morning early, and came back in the afternoon on Wednesday. Kansas Honor Flight is designed to get veterans to see their memorials in Washington, DC. And Vietnam Memorial is the last memorial that was, has been built in honor of our veterans. There isn't a memorial right now for Desert Storm, Desert Shield, or any of the other conflicts that we've been in recently. Well, Kansas Honor Flight has taken care of all of the World War II veterans, and most of them, unfortunately, have all passed away. So they're not thanking any veterans. If there are any alive today, please volunteer and sign up for it. Most of the Korean War veterans have passed away. And as a result, Kansas Honor Flight's not able to take many of those, because they just don't exist anymore. So the Vietnam-era veterans are the last group that they are taking to DC, and they're running out of them. I purposely didn't sign up for this until the very end, and they keep coming to me and saying, hey, you're a Vietnam-era veteran, you need to go to the nation's capital and be recognized for your service. They're running out of Vietnam-era veterans. So the reason I'm speaking to all of the public right now is that if you're a Vietnam-era veteran, sign up for it. They need you to sign up, because as soon as they're done, they're done. The organization will disband. So we're at the very end of all of those people that have signed up. And I know there are more Vietnam-era veterans out there, and we need to pick them up. As we heard just a month or so ago, out of the millions that served in Vietnam, only 30% of them are still alive today. 30%. So we have to recognize those individuals that served. And one of the things that I've tried to do all my career, especially since I retired, is to recognize veterans and the sacrifices that they made for our country. So besides thanking the Kansas Honor Flight, I want to thank, first of all, all veterans for their service to our great nation. I need to especially thank our staff and our Board of County Commissioners, because they covered for me last week, and I thank them very much for covering for me. We had, they had to delay one of the items on the agenda last week so that I could be here, because it was pretty well going to require a 5-0 vote on that. So thank you for all of that, you covered for me. My wife and my family, really, were the ones that sacrificed while I served. For 29 years, we traveled all over. My wife, she's the one that was responsible for moving from one place to another and had to take care of my kids, because I was gone most of the time. We moved 14 times in 29 years. So she had to pack up everything that we owned and move it to wherever our next duty station was, unpack it, because usually when I hit the ground wherever I went, they were sending me someplace else, because a lot of the jobs I had required me to travel a great deal. So thanks to my wife and my family for supporting me in 29 years. I want to pass a couple of things down. I showed them to Commissioner Meitzner already, so we hadn't seen them, but I got a very nice challenge coin on the trip, and a gentleman up in El Dorado actually made dog tags for each and every one of us on the trip, 143 veterans. And so those are the dog tags he prepared for me. Now, they're not quite accurate, because our actual dog tags have our religion, our blood type on them, and our serial number. And obviously, he didn't know any of those things, so he put other things on there, but they were dog tags as a remembrance of traveling on Kansas Honor Flight. The other thing that they had, which was kind of a little bit of a surprise, but one of the things you find when you're overseas is that mail call is an important thing, because that's the only thing that connects you back to your home. Now, today, it's not quite as bad, because we got internet, we got everything, so it's a lot easier to communicate. When I went over to Germany in 1969, it wasn't very easy. You couldn't just pick up the phone and dial home and let the folks know back home what was happening over there. And when my first son was born in Germany, my family didn't find out about it until they finally got a letter from me back home. And they could send me a letter back to congratulate my wife and I on the birth of our first child. So what they do is they solicit people to send letters to us. And so the first night, the second night that we were there, they had a nice dinner for us, and they had what we called mail call. And first of all, I got a very nice card from every one of the commissioners, and Lisa and Carol, and I thanked them very much for that. I was surprised, I had a stack this thick of people, and a lot of them I didn't know. And I had them from Pennsylvania, I had letters from Montana, I had letters from all over the United States, and that was a real surprise to me. But this one was from Pennsylvania, and it's from, let's see, granddaughter of a World War II veteran, and the sister of an active-duty veteran. And it says, Dear veteran, thank you during this Honor Flight mail call. Seems like saying thank you seems small when your service has been anything but that. It made a difference in more ways than you can see, and more lives than you'll ever know, with gratitude. I'm sorry. Ronald Reagan said, some people live their entire lifetime and wonder if they ever made a difference in the world. A veteran doesn't have that problem.
That's right.
Here's what they said. Heartfelt thanks. To those who served in the past, I thank you with all my heart for your service. Thank you for my life of freedom, and I'm able to lead. Freedom is not an abstract idea, nor is it truly free. It is a difference between the life I chose as an individual and the life others chose for me. I'm free to think, feel, speak the way I wish. I'm free to live where I want. I'm free to speak my opinion and stand for my beliefs. You veterans have given me that freedom. You've sacrificed part of your life without complaint, without reservations. You gave, even when giving, cost you dearly. Thank you for your sacrifice, your courage, your honor to make life better. Thank you for your sacrifice, your courage, your honor to make life better. I have no way to repay you. Please know that my thanks to you are sincere and deep, for without you, freedom would not exist. I'm sorry. The final thing I want to read is on the back of this challenge coin that got from Honor Flight. And it says simply, Thank you. A veteran is someone who at one point wrote a blank check made payable to the United States of America for an amount up to and including their life. And we got to go to Arlington during our trip to DC. And you see the thousands, spend thousands of Americans that gave their life for our freedom. I thank them. One of the greatest honors that I had when I was there was that they allowed me to lay a tomb, a wreath at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier. And so I'm sorry, I'm a little emotional about this, but I love our veterans. And I love the fact that Commissioner Howell and I had the opportunity to serve you in not just this way, but in many other ways during our lives. Thank you all.
Well, Commissioner, covering for you was easy because you covered for this country for a lot of years. I'm grateful for you. I'm grateful you got to go on this. I'm grateful we serve with two veterans up here and for your service. We were excited that you got to go. And I know that you have waited to go because you wanted the people that, that serve to go before you. So we're glad you got a chance to go. My wife was looking at those pictures and I looked over and she was teared up when you were laying that wreath. And I said, what are you crying for? And she said, see the pictures, Commissioner Dennis? It's powerful. So thank you, sir, for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim, for your service.
Okay, anything else under other?
Yeah, I wasn't expecting Kleenexes to be up here, but thank you, thank you. Thanks for sharing your story.
Yeah, thank you.
I want to reiterate to say thank you both for your, for your service. When I think about what does a public servant look like? I can't think of really anybody better that exemplifies that than you. Your whole, your whole career has been in service to others. And so I'm so grateful, I'm so glad and I'm so grateful that you went on the Honor Flight. You deserve it so much and I'm just, I feel lucky that I've had the opportunity to work with you as long as we have and that you have been a mentor to me because you are, like I said, the true definition of a public servant. So thank you for your service.
Okay, I do have another under other. As we had some elections, some special elections yesterday. Our election commissioner and some staff are here today. I know of the Valley Center USC 262 Special Election, their bond issue. Hayesville had a sales tax initiative. Both of those were in the affirmative, both passed. But I, talking to a few people this morning, the election went very smoothly, very, very smoothly. So I just want to credit, Lori, your staff and you guys did a really fine job. And every, every election seems to be smoother and smoother. So it's a credit to your staff and the way you guys communicate. So, so thank you, thank you for what you do. Okay, anything else under other? Commissioner Howell?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I should have, my time means off a little bit. I should have said something just a moment before you went on to the elections. But I just want to say it is an honor to work with Commissioner Dennis. You know, we don't get along on everything, but I am proud, I'm proud to have you as my colleague. I think he is a, he is truly a servant. I mean, he's served it in the schools, the state school board as a colonel, what, 28 years?
29.
29 years, Colonel, moved all around the world. And that's not easy. And of course, when you, when you take that oath, you never know what your future is going to hold. You don't know if you're going to be in a war, what you're going to be asked to do. Others gave the ultimate sacrifice, but when you sign up and you, and you pledge that oath, you're essentially giving your life. You don't know how it's going to turn out, but it is an extraordinary thing. And I am so grateful to be a veteran, but I'm really proud, proud to work with you. And if you haven't noticed, no offense to anybody around the county, but to find, to find veterans in elected positions is actually a little bit rare. And thankfully, we have two on this board, but it is a little unusual to find veterans serving in elected roles. There's a number in the legislature that have, that do that. But in city councils and school boards around the, around the cities and around the county and other parts in the state, it's a little bit unusual. I don't know why that is exactly, but you have been a great commissioner and I think Commissioner Lopez said it exactly right. The fact that you have a lifetime of sacrifice and service is duly noted. And I'm proud to work with you, my friend. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Executive Session.
We have no executive session? So here we are at 2:55. My reputation of having long meetings is not being... Still intact. There will be, there will be a recall election. Thank you again, everybody, for being flexible today and for everything that was accomplished today. Very much appreciate you. Colonel Dennis, God bless you, sir. Thank you. We are adjourned.